The school has requested that I read the following statement in advance of this evening's meeting. Governor Northam's Executive Order 63 states all individuals age 10 and over shall, when entering, exiting, traveling through, and spending time inside public buildings, including schools, cover their mouth and nose with face covering. Masks are required from state or local government buildings when accessed for the purpose of securing public services. Enforcement is overseen by the Virginia Department of Health, not the local government. If someone were to issue a complaint with the VDH regarding noncompliance by individuals to school buildings, it is possible a school closure could be imposed. Understandably, some folks have medical conditions for not wearing masks and would simply respond to VDH with their justifications. Please help us keep schools open for children by following the Executive Order 63 until it is lifted or modified. Thank you for your cooperation. Rappahannock County Public Schools Administration. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is our certification after our closed session at the beginning, at the end of afternoon session. Certification reads, "Do each of you certify, to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act? And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board of Supervisors in a closed meeting." Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to the first item on the evening's agenda, which is the public hearing regarding the comprehensive plan. I believe the county administrator has a short presentation and can do this up for us as well.
Yeah, I apologize ahead if you can't see the screen very well. This speaker is very sensitive. The presentation is attached to board dums and is available for your review as we come in. That is helpful for you. So I just want to make sure everybody understands what we're doing here today. The current comprehensive plan was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2004. Lovely recorder reminded me. I should turn on my recorder. Sorry for that interruption. Back in 2004, the Code of Virginia requires the counties to review the plan every five years, and as most of you are aware, who've been engaged, the county's been somewhat consistently reviewing the plan for the last 10 years or so. Following the public hearing on September 19th, the Planning Commission formally approved an updated plan and recommended that plan to the Board of Supervisors that they adopt the plan that was forwarded. The Planning Commission had the job of preparing the changes, and then, after the public hearing, to approve the plan, amend and approve the plan, or decide to work further on it. So they decided to approve that plan. Subsequent to their approval, they did find some changes, errata changes, that they thought were appropriate, and they passed those ones in forward as well. They are attached to board dums. The plan, the basis of the plan is the same layout as it was in 2004, it's just updated. I've listed out the chapters here, from introduction, environment, population characteristics, economy, existing land use characteristics, and regulatory measures, comprehensive land use, plan goals, principles, policies, future land use, planning implementation, and commercial area plans, and appendices. This plan has been on the county website since, through the advertisement period, and that is a requirement of the Code of Virginia. It was also on the website during the Planning Commission's public hearing. And I've tried to draw off some significant changes of the plan to focus the attention of the public. Chapters 1 through 5 of the plan largely include statistical information and background information. That information has all been updated. Specifically, and importantly, the population projections on page 29 continue to forecast limited population growth within the county. And so the remainder of the plan is developed and added on. If the population projections were to indicate rapid growth, then the plan should accommodate that rapid growth, but that's not the case. Chapter 6 of the plan, Goals, Principles, and Policies, three new goals were added, and that's on page 83. Goal 3 was added, which states preserve and protect groundwater and surface waters. Goal 5 was added, preserve air quality and limit noise and light pollution. Goal 13 was added, support the creation of public and private venues and services that serve the youth and families of Rappahannock. Principles were updated, but remain largely the same. With underneath each principle, there are several policies that were included, and there were several changes and additions. Specifically, Principle 3, Policy 12 on page 87 was added, that states, "To the extent permitted by applicable federal, state laws and regulations, restrict the potential adverse effects of telecommunications infrastructure and wind, solar, and other renewable energy or public utilities facilities on prime agricultural land, sensitive or scenic landscapes, bridges and crests, and view sheds from designated scenic highways, designated historic sites, and other areas important to maintaining rural county atmosphere." Principle 3, Policy 13 on page 87 was added, "Ensure that ridges, crests, and ridge tops are at category scenic nature as a valuable resource to be preserved." Principle 4, Policy 4 on page 88, "Consider affordable housing needs particularly for seniors and the disabled, and explore opportunities for aging in place." I'll note here that the Code of Virginia requires the county to consider affordable housing. Principle 7, Policy 9 on page 91, "Encourage development of broadband communications, state-of-the-art technologies as essential components of the 21st century economy. The means provided for the expansion to serve the county's residents, businesses, schools, government, volunteer, and public activity organizations should be in concert with the principles articulated in policies enumerated herein, including design, site, and facilities." Principle 3, Policy 12, that is on the previous page, which discusses limiting the impact of those towers and whatnot. And Principle 7, Policy 9, encouraging broadband, may conflict with each other to some extent, and the board and the community should consider how those should interplay. Chapter 7, Future Land Use Plan, has been modified significantly. In page 96, proportions are still aligned with the 2004 plan, and they envision and encourage that future residential and commercial development be focused in and around major villages. The 2004 plan allowed the reader and Board of Supervisors to define what in and around major villages meant. The new plan provides clarity on that. And the new plan states, "To give greater clarity to this objective in the light of lack of administrative village boundaries, the future land use maps reflect the current zoning in the village areas." Map numbers 15A and 15E show the contiguous areas of each village that are zoned residential village, commercial village, and commercial highway, and in the villages of Sperryville, the areas zoned residential and residential rural, that are contiguous to and are actually or potentially served by existing sewer treatment. The designated areas in these zoning categories provide for anticipated development and vision growth for the next 5 to 10 years without rezoning any additional areas outside the villages or expansion of existing residential and commercial zones of existing villages." So this added language seeks to define a boundary around the villages and focus development there and include development rezonings outside the area. It's a staff suggestion that those lines and maps as shown be modified such that rather than just showing the area of the village, they show the current existing zoning in the village, and an example of potentially revised maps are shown here. So on the left is a type of map that is in the current draft plan under consideration, and on the right is a map showing the current zoning with different colors indicating current zoning districts. And the narrative would have to be aligned with those. Further, the Future Land Use Plan added a transportation plan, which is also a requirement of the Code of Virginia. I'll note that the VDH must review this Future Land Use Plan, this transportation plan, before adoption, and they have a certain amount of time to do that. So following this public hearing, we'll send that document to them to make sure that they review it, because I don't believe it's been done yet. The plan also adds a broadband communications plan, and that broadband communications plan seeks to deliver on the goal expressed earlier. The Code of Virginia requires the plan to consider strategies to provide broadband infrastructure that is sufficient to meet the current and future needs of residents and businesses in local counties. Information included in this plan and in the goal were part developed by the broadband committee that reports to the Board of Supervisors. The plan seeks to achieve 95% coverage of broadband services that should be implemented consistent with the policies and principles expressed elsewhere in this plan. I mentioned earlier that careful consideration has to be made to how that may align and conflict with other areas of the plan. First, can you hit the screen real quick? Just sort of question. Come on. Still within Chapter 7, Future Land Use Plan, now on page 99, Wireless Telecommunications Plan was added. This is a significant new addition and seeks to provide some clarity around the scenario when major infrastructure is put in, like the towers, 222522, or the soft reformist on 522 earlier this year, last year. It states in part, "No wireless communication facilities, other than small cell facilities as defined by state law, should be permitted in Rappahannock County except for special exception permit issued by the Board of Supervisors after consideration and recommendations from the Planning Commission." This is very similar to how things are handled there. When reviewing such applications, the commission and the Board of Supervisors should apply the following goals and policies to each application, consistent with applicable federal, state law, and regulations. And so the application of the goals and policies is enumerated as follows. All applications should include a section detailing what consideration the applicant gave to other alternatives. Total communication facilities whenever feasible should require concealed facilities designed to blend unobtrusively with the surrounding landscape where adjacent or visible from scenic byways designated by VDH, which there's a new map, or near ridges and crests, or visible from historic resources, which are currently designated, of which there is another new map. And that map has the historic resources designated by the Virginia Department of Historic Resources. Nonconcealed artless facilities should be allowed only as a last resort. So this places great emphasis on concealed towers when they are approved. A note in red, the administration thoughts that the provisions require careful review with the Code of Virginia changes that came into play mid-2018, and need to be carefully compared with the goals of the board and community relative to broadband. Still, Future Land Use Plan, Renewable Energy Operations Section was included, and this seeks to provide guidance relative to large-scale renewable energy facilities such as solar or wind. As the renewable energy industry expands, the county should continue its policy of ensuring that these uses do not detract from the basic agriculture, character, and tourist economy of its rural lands, especially where such facilities would impact the county's natural scenic beauty or would be visible from designated scenic byways or historic resources, including that limited to sites designated in the Virginia Landmarks Register and the National Register of Historic Places, and taking into account the county's proximity to the Shenandoah National Park. To the maximum extent permitted by applicable federal, state law, all renewable energy generated facilities should be permitted only in accordance with the policy set forth Similarly, for affordable housing, as I noted, the Code of Virginia requires through section 15.2223D that the plan include the designation of areas and implementation of measures for the construction, rehabilitation, and maintenance of affordable housing, which is sufficient to meet the current and future needs of residents, all levels of income in the locality while considering the current and future needs of the planning district within which the locality is situated. The Planning Commission noted in their proposed approval recommended tract that they plan to revisit this requirement after Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission completes a regional housing study within the next two years, and that plan is well on its way. Lastly, the last part of the plan is Appendix A, which is Commercial Area Plan, which focuses on an area between Washington and Sperryville. On page 95, it states that the commercial area, this area, has been specifically designated for development in the Commercial Area Plan Appendix A, as well as through designation of a Commercial Area Overlay District in Rappahannock County Zoning Origins, which is in Code Section 17045.1. The area should be used as a focal point for future economic and public facility activities provided that adequate road access is maintained. The Planning Commission recommended to significantly change the boundaries of this commercial area, as shown on map 18, which I'll pull up in a second. The changes reduce the area to the north side of Route 22 and increase the area on the south side. Staff note here is that the underlying zoning is important to understand when this new map is constructed. This overlay area modifies the underlying zoning. So if the native zoning of the land is agriculture and the property is within this overlay, general commercial uses are permitted. So removing or reducing this area that's covered by the overlay would reduce the zoning of that area. And similarly, causing an area to become within the overlay area when it wasn't before would increase the zoning density of that area. That will require a separate public hearing because it's specific to several specific parcels. And so if it's changed in the comp plan, there's still work to be done to have it affected in zoning origins. And I'm not sure how clearly you can see this map, but it shows up on page 109, and just after 109 of the plan. So just to wrap things up, adoption of the 2020 plan by the Board of Supervisors must follow Code of Virginia Section 15.22226. Following this public hearing, the board shall proceed to consideration of the plan in actual 150 days of the local Planning Commission's recommending resolution, which was dated August 19. In doing this, the board must either approve and adopt, amend and adopt, or disapprove the plan and return it to the Planning Commission for further work. The staff recommendation that the board receive public input through the public hearing, and then consider either amending and adopting or disapproving the plan. We believe that there are matters that should be incorporated into the plan, including the errata that was provided by the Planning Commission, and some of the topics that were brought up in this presentation. So that should be done after careful consideration at work sessions at the board. That's all I have for this. I'll turn back over to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. At this point, I think it would be appropriate, and I'll open the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak, please raise your hand. I will identify you. We ask that you use the microphone. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less, do that and specify yourself by name and the district in which you reside. And this public hearing is specific to comp plan feedback. There will be a separate public hearing on the other budget item later, and a public comment period at the end of the meeting, should you have anything else that you'd like to comment on. Anyone wishing to speak on the comp plan, please raise your hand.
Ms. Miller, Hampton District, addressing the board and my fellow citizens. I wish to thank the Planning Commission for producing this plan, especially the new chairman who has brought it to this conclusion at this point. It is so important that we not let the perfect become the enemy of the good. Everyone in this room could make some change in this plan that would please that person. But this is a plan of the county, and it is so long overdue, it is very welcome. I thank all of you for this consideration, and I look forward to the plan being adopted, whether amended or adopted as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Let's go him back.
So I have a full understanding. One cannot make a comment on any appendix, or can, at this point?
Well, the appendix would be considered part of the comp discussion, yes.
Excellent. My name is Tanya Lee of Peterson. I am a resident of Piedmont District, and I also am trustee of the Shenandoah National Park Trust. And so I come to this meeting with two lenses. One is a resident and citizen of the county, and the other is someone who has some responsibility for the preservation and protection of the Shenandoah National Park. I want to begin by thanking the Planning Committee for their efforts to update the comprehensive plan on behalf of the county, so I join the previous speaker in that ad away to the planning group. I also appreciate the attention and references to the park throughout the plan. For example, on page 67,3, wilderness areas of the Shenandoah National Park comprise, and by the way, Mr. Administrator, there's a typo, it says compromise, as opposed to comprise. That's an important distinction. But it comprises 3,670 acres in Rappahannock County. So that's not just a neighborly relationship, that's an intimate relationship. And as such, the plan notes that it sees itself as an important partner and neighbor to the park. Further, the plan indicates that this raises a host of issues in how the county manages that relationship. Stormwater, stream buffer vegetation, animal and crop management, and myriad other practices that in combination determine the quality and health of the watershed, end of quote. And I would add the view shed. The plan went on with what I can only describe as a hallelujah chorus, about the need to preserve the awe-inspiring landscape, the forest and vistas that are critical to nurturing tourism, that support so many of our county businesses. Crescendoing in a pledge that, in my experience, is very unique to any county plan that I've ever seen. It's a pledge that goes like this, "We, the people of Rappahannock County, declare it to be a scenic county, and all goals, principles, and policies will reflect and evolve from this fundamental recognition." There are recurring themes throughout the plan of protecting the view shed, scenic vistas, ridge tops, and groundwater and surface waters. And the overwhelming emphasis on the preservation of the natural beauty of our county and the need to carefully steward this relationship, it made my head and my heart sing to read all of that. That is, until I looked at the map that laid out the pattern for commercial development for the village of Sperryville, which is the county's gateway village to the Shenandoah National Park. All of the tributes, pledges, and hallelujahs were met with this statement. "The intensity or amount of building and paved areas associated with future commercial development with landings, that is, commercial zones, would be tied directly to sewage treatment facilities." This statement is accompanied by a painfully short paragraph in Appendix A on low-impact development, which speaks to such things as functional drainage, depression storage of ground, drainage swales that will alter the flow of water. And it made me wonder how this impacts the park, and what it means to those goals and principles that formed throughout the plan. And so the plan began with a bang and ended with a whimper. It really was as if the process had run out of steam. Planning by default became the result, the presence of a sewer line. And this leaves unaddressed all those issues of conservation and preservation, brought up consistently and persistently in the plan. So as one of "we, the people of Rappahannock County," I ask the Board of Supervisors not to approve the layout of the commercial zone or landays and the plan's Appendix A until it becomes more consistent with and attentive to the goals and principles laid out in the body of the plan. Sperryville, with its adjacency to the park, and all that being a gateway community to the park means, deserves more careful analysis vis-à-vis the goals and principles of the plan, and not merely the availability of a sewer line. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Then anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi. I'm Barbara Black, Piedmont District. I'm on the RAPP board, and I'm proudly the chair of the RAPP's Special Arts Fund. I just wanted to say that I think that the current description under cultural resources misses some opportunities to really cover the diversity of the arts in the county. The arts is not just about fine arts. And I would like very much to offer some language, and if you accept it, where would I, how would I do that? What was the appropriate way to do that?
This is public comment. If you'd like, I can certainly follow up with you after the meeting for ways to incorporate any ideas that you may have.
Great, okay. Yeah, specifically, like music really isn't covered. We have wealth of musicians in this county, and it doesn't just happen at the Town of Washington Theater, it happens in picking parties and fire halls. There are crafters who live in this county. There's an art tour that brings lots of people here and really highlights our artists in the county. And it's not just about that. I mean, it's really that parts are fundamental to this county, to our identity, and really it's infused in the schools as well. So I guess I'd just like to have that reflected as a statement of who we are. So thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. I would note that the art tour was picked up in the errata, and there may be some other things picked up there as well, but I'll be happy to cover that for you later.
Good, thanks, Christine.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Peterson.
I'm kind of distressed by the idea that all our development wants to focus around the towns, and most people really aren't going to move in there. I don't think we really want to be rural, and I don't think we really want to build up our towns too far without some kind of protection for our historical character, like historic overlay zoning or something like that, to keep the ambiance as it exists today. And I'd like to see something that address the growth from the point of view of spreading it out more into the county. And I think sewage treatment plants, this bigger and better sewage treatment plants is not my idea of what I moved here for. And I think if we could spread the influx of people more broadly across the county, we wouldn't have to spend a lot of time on industrializing our infrastructure. Anyway, yeah, I just want to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, Ms. Vaughn. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. Vaughn. He'll be next.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Margaret Vaughn. I'm also from the Piedmont District and a member of the Document and Broadband Committee. I'm here tonight speaking for myself. I want to thank, sort of thanks to the comprehensive planners who did a tremendously time-consuming job in putting together a lot of disparate ideas and trying to harmonize them into the common plan. It's a human, a valid work, and I do appreciate that. I spent some time reviewing the sections of the draft 2020 comprehensive plan which we're considering here tonight. In particular, I focused on the sections of the comp plan that support maintaining the county scenic fusheds and place restrictions on construction of towers for fixed wireless broadband work and juxtapose those interests of the comp plan, which also calls for development of broadband services, which will involve construction of towers. Mr. Curry outlined very, very well the areas where there appear to be different directions that the broadband, excuse me, the comprehensive plan encourages the county to take. As I see it, I think it's several steps back from the comprehensive plan and the broadband maybe findings, this county is facing two, maybe three possible directions for future development of broadband services. One direction would be to maintain as little space possible to pristine fusheds, scenic byways, and ridge tops, features which identify with the comprehensive plans, characterize Rappahannock County, and give it a truly unique identity. This, like a dearly all fiber optic broadband network, would satisfy the interests of preserving the fusheds, but it would, and get us the high-speed internet that we're looking at, but it would be extremely costly, take a long time to implement, but it would meet with the broadband requirements identified in the comp plan. There's another direction that would be for the county to embrace solutions like fixed wireless broadband throughout the county where there is no fiber or coaxial cable. This direction would mean allowing and increasing the number of medium towers, possibly on geographically advantageous points such as ridge lines or hilltops, which would interplay with some of the other comprehensive plan goals. The third direction might be to select a hybrid of fiber and wireless to maximize the area required to install easily and less extensively, but fixed wireless would be a solution for a pretty definitively expensive wired solution. So as I see it, under the proposed comprehensive plan, we have three or so directions we can take to meet broadband needs. What we do not have is a broadband plan, a true county-wide detailed broadband design plan, plan with all internet users identified, with a cost-benefit analysis for each type of broadband service suitable, with engineering requirements for wired and wireless networks, done by, along with labor, materials, equipment costs, by natural projections for increases in county revenue. In short, all the various details we need to know to assess what direction is most suitable for the best cost for the highest benefit to county subscribers and still be the part of the end state identified for broadband services in the comprehensive plan. We all have a concept of what the plan should be. We have ideas for how to implement, aspirations for what it will accomplish, and hopes that it will meet broadband needs, which the pandemic lockdown has affected. But ideas, aspirations, and hopes do not constitute a well-thought-out design plan, one that will detail costs, timeframe for implementation, benefits to the county, and a credible document that will include what county wants and needs when it applies for federal or state grant bodies to fund this plan. And a comprehensive design plan that would also help the county land planners better harmonize some of the somewhat disparate aspirations identified in the comp plan. We want to preserve our fusheds. We want to go the direction of comprehensive broadband services, and give us a better way of harmonizing and compromising as necessary to meet both county states' desires. I urge the Board of Supervisors in considering spending precious funds for broadband services to start with funding a credible, reasonable, detailed county-wide broadband plan first. Then it will be competent, succeeding expenditure on broadband development will be the best and most timely bank of the buck. And assure that even in the planning stages that the direction and guidance provided by the comprehensive plan is met. In addition to first funding a broadband design plan, the county also needs to include funding for GIS mapping system to support the design engineers. Every design plan I've looked at for broadband development has required GIS mapping overlays for certain types of demographics and geographic information, which is very hard to obtain by other sources. So GIS mapping is also an essential tool developing the type of broadband design. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Ms. Mathew?
Madam Chair, do we have the ability to turn the volume up a little bit?
That mic is a little problematic. But I wouldn't want to raise my voice, I do.
That may be better. I was having a couple here, but the gentleman just left. He said he couldn't hear anything.
I can hear you here.
Sometimes it's a matter of adjusting the height of the mic. So there may be a little bit of adjustment needed, the height needs, or to project.
Stand a little closer.
Especially with masks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good surprise. I am Matthew Black. I live in Piedmont District, and I wanted to focus on really the definition of towns and villages as the focal points for development, for future development. I know a lot has been said about clustering development in those villages and towns, and that has really given rise to the question of, well, what are the villages? What are the towns? And some have offered the use of maps to help define the geography, the boundaries of these towns and villages. And while that, to me, makes sense ostensibly, it does raise a question of, well, how, what are those maps? How big a radius? How big a circle around these towns? And it's like Amosville has a little, the proposed map is very small relative to the development. Sperryville, the map kind of follows the sewer. But it raises a question for me. Is that the right way? Is that, should the maps show a bigger village size or a smaller? And that suggests, why not think about what we mean by village or town? You know, what do we want? What kind of density? How big should Sperryville be? Who makes that decision before we just overlay a map? Because a map has certain connotations and what's in, what's out. And particularly if they're, you know, they think last minute, let's add this parcel of land or that parcel of land. What's the guiding rationale for the size of our towns? And so to me, it would make sense to either mandate or certainly encourage some planning at the village or town level so the folks that live in those communities begin to figure out what do they want in a town or a village? What does future development mean? Do we want ten more houses? Do we want fifty? Do we want a hundred more houses? Should these houses be built in five acre lots or one acre lot? Should we townhouses, apartments? There's a lot of, what kind of style? Do we want these villages to have the same kind of character that we kind of know and love in this county? So all that, to me, suggests to me for some planning at the local, at the very local level. And a map seems to be the product, an output of that kind of planning. So I just, observation, comment, suggestion, and take it wherever you want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Anyone else wishing to speak? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Barbara. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you.
Okay.
Like, if you notice that all those have worked so hard, I'm leaning against some of the plan to the stage where it is on. What's other issues to say about it? I support the concept of planning and defining our villages very much. However, I would want those definitions, like the village, and the goal is to immersion of citizen-based planning project, not through the artificial boundaries of a sewage system. Imagine those jokes you'd make about that. We want to preserve the child of Sperryville and build the definitions of what kind of revitalization and development best meets all schools. We want to encourage subdivision goals, cluster housing of new preservation, hard point new businesses, series of that collusion provide additional opportunities. We will want control lines and tunnels that consider traffic dependence, groundwater supplies, sewage capacity, and hurricane change systems, increase costs for fire and rescue, et cetera. We want to encourage the parent village to be a safe gathering place for all people. Me too, when I walk around, it's a skinny street. I give on, but I'll add six specific recommendations. One, remove the maps from the comprehensive plan, especially for Sperryville. In living in this recommendation, it's best to have a cluster, a town power, rather than a charge thirty-five acres into village boundary and sewage system, which has potential if it is reduced to one and two acres of land, which is requesting to have a massive subdivision along our most beautiful fusheds. And if any of you have taken a walk up to the road behind the street that exists, you know, it's going to be a little broad here and it's a little big this way, but it's got the most beautiful blocking places by many people, visitors, and love to live your life. You get there first time, there's our blood going everywhere. But then we've got these beautiful trees and it's wonderful. But it also, yeah, it does have the potential to be subdivision without planning in terms of what the village wants to do. So I request that you, at least for Sperryville, of all of our villages, may want to appoint a town planning commission so that people could get together and find what they probably want to develop in the county and what we want our village to look like in the future. There will be co-opted, there will be changed, there always is, but we want to be private. We don't want to be defined by a sewage system. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Vaughn.
Hi, I'm John Tierce from the Wakefield District. Hello, everyone. And I want to reiterate several things that have already been said. A lot of good work has gone into the plan, and I'd like to thank everyone who put all the work into it. I also want to reiterate the point that I think we need some clearer study of broadband needs and a clearer statement of objectives, planning objectives with respect to broadband. And I think some sort of hybrid plan is probably in order. And I think the plan probably ought to encourage Rappahannock Electric to get on board, to strengthen fiber optic cable to parts of the county where that would be helpful. I also want to say I attended the public hearing for the planning commission, and several things came up there that I think were really important and need to be reiterated to the Board of Supervisors. The main one being that the way the villages are described is inconsistent with the way the villages are mapped. And it does seem to me that if there's an incompatibility between the mapping and the description, that leaves the plan open to exploitation by people who really might want to do more development than we want to see. So the maps also don't reflect what's currently zoned for village use. So the maps don't show the existing village zone. They seem to me to draw the villages in a very arbitrary way. So I think the maps need, really need to be rethought. They either need to be taken out for now, or they need to be reconsidered in such a way that they more accurately reflect the current village structure and the potential areas for further growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tierce. Anyone else wishing to speak? Gressinger, is her hand going up?
Evening. Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. First of all, I want to say this has been a huge, major accomplishment. And then I also want to reiterate the importance of us being in compliance so we can be in compliance with Virginia State law. That's the entire extremely important purpose of working on this plan. And we need to, if this plan is in compliance with what we need to do for state law, I think we need to get on with it. I did, at the last meeting, they did talk about the maps, and the consultant in the October last year meeting has said that those maps did not need to be included at this point, but there is a person on the planning commission who seemed to want to include this. So that might be something for consideration. But I do believe that this plan, we need to get it passed so we can be in compliance with Virginia State law. And then you go on to the next five years, and in that time of the five years, you can always have amendments to things that might come up. The other important thing of getting this thing passed is that we have zoning ordinances and things that need to be addressed. And so that was part of the issue that was brought up at the October meeting last year, that these things need to be addressed in the planning. Comprehensive plan needs to be in place properly for those things to be addressed so we can get on properly with a lot of the issues that people have addressed this evening. So I commend you for all the work you've done and hope you can go forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gressinger. I think there was a hand over here as well. Is that Mr. Stans?
Gentleman over here in the corner.
All right. There you go. That's, it's a big room, folks. Bear with me.
Good evening. I'm Barb Trachten in Piedmont District. You've heard from others about the maps and the concerns regarding the maps. I did want to point out one item on Group Ninety-Six and also revised in the red that there's a discussion about mini-gested development, being one unit per five, one to five acres. And that's to be clear and around the villages. I believe it needs clarification for and around, because that could mean tons of farmland in the neighborhoods outside of our villages that could then be rezoned and redeffounded one to five acres at a time. So I ask that you please consider removing the and around portion of that note on Page Ninety-Six. I also want to briefly comment on the gold map of Sperryville, which does have, which the previous speakers have commented, it's based on the, basically, the sewage system. On this late agenda for a water and sewer authority, there's button down engaging professions to target the tonne of capacity of the sewer plant. There's a tonne of knowledge of capacity, and if we're defining gold maps and trying to add density in areas that support the utilities and capacities.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? There was a hand over here. Yes, in the back.
Madam Chairwoman, can I give you a handout please?
Sure, I'll be happy to receive that. Thank you. Is there one for the record as well, or just one for each order?
I got six. Do you want one more?
No.
My wife said I'm on a talk and need to have maybe some drawings to help me. So they're pretty rudimentary. I'm Tom Taylor, Piedmont District. Heard this thirty-five acre tract reference a couple times tonight, as I did at the planning commission meetings. And I just wanted you to have the map to take a look at. I'm not going to read everything to it. Maybe you could look at it when you get a chance and kind of see how things are actually lining up, which is, I have a line, you'll see those lines, main sewer line that goes across part of my property on the Woodville Road. And then the second map is, kind of shows you the field south. Excuse me, field south and the road and then the sewer line again. Main sewer line goes up on Woodville Road and goes in front of my property. And then the last map kind of gives you an idea, a rough idea of Sperryville from that map. And I thought the Rapid News had a good photo of it, too. It shows two parcels that you see there. Of course, one of mine, that's where the Kinkline goes to the Word Post Office. And then, of course, the other one that I think is correct is the school line. As far as I know, that was left out also. Initially, when I went to the planning commission meeting, RR5 zoning was, around sewer was left out. And it was approved, and you'll see a timeline, and we'll go back to the next page. You'll see a timeline of those meetings that I attended that shows it was included, voted on and included by a majority at a work session, that any RR5 zoned land that had access to the Sperryville sewer line would be included. And then, of course, there was another meeting. And then the next meeting was the Planning Commission public hearing. It was upheld at that time. And so then it goes to the work session just prior to being sent up to the supervisors. And it gets deleted, slashed. I forget what date it's, but I put it in here. You'll see the notes. I'm not going to stand here and read to you. But basically, you get the essence of what happened. And they were using a PV9 map. It was referenced by one member, I think of the commission, paraphrasing that PV9 map not show that my property in particular, it seems to be the one that's just issued, was not served by that. But if you go to the Rapid County Water and Sewer Authority, they don't use that map. They have their own map, and it's very detailed. And it shows that I do have access to the sewer line. Actually, it's required that I have to serve on if I built it. If there's an existing house on it, I don't have a choice. I have to go on to the sewer line. And so that's why I always thought I had, since I was in the village, it was known to RR5. I've never gone, I've owned it twenty-one years, my wife and I. We've never gone to try to zone it. But then when they tried excluding me out of the village, then it kind of caught my ears, like, hey, I thought I was in the village. But just because I did development doesn't mean that I don't want to protect my rights on that property, which are RR5 zone. And so I would like to request it should be in the village. If there is going to be a village line drawn around it, and if it's not, then that's not, then if it's going to be a zoning map that's put in, then that would be the status quo. So, but that's my request, is you'll consider putting me back in because it was taken out with information that wasn't really correct. And that is, you need to take a look. And I actually copied a page, I put two pages on one of the Rapid County Water and Sewer Authority and their mandate that would serve. So that's it. I thank you for your time and letting me have a chance to tell my side of it.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I don't talk plan enough as it is, and the math is... That helps.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, supply.
Paige Glady Jackson District. Listening to the comments, there seems to be a very big misunderstanding of what these maps are for. I interpret these maps as one of the best tools to restrict development. As I understand how the maps were done, they were done based on what the existing zoning is. And so it limits development outside of those maps. Whereas the old plan, you would have had development all over the place. Because the picture of Sperryville, for example, was gigantic. So these maps actually limit the development. They don't allow more development, they limit development. That's the thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glady. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, same.
I'm Sally Gaines from Piedmont District. And it seems that maps are pushing development to Sperryville, almost to the exclusion of the rest of the town. And that does raise the issue of traffic coming from what I call the leading edge of the county, Amistville, really over across the county, to get to new areas of revitalization or development. And it seems to be predicated on the sewer system, which makes it incumbent on us to better understand the system's actual available capacity. And I was interested to read actually in the latest issue of the Rapid News, there was a comment that, if I understood it, only using a third of the capacity of the system. Whereas in a previous article, we were using active capacity. So somehow, usage is falling. But there are many ways to look at capacity. One is certainly the gauge of the system. The maintenance is going to be required. Another is the size of the mains and livers, the actual taps, the inactive taps, as well as the flow-through rates. And I vividly recall, I think it was three years ago after some heavy rains, how every sewer line in Sperryville down the main street was flashing because we were, at that time, over capacity due to the rain. So I don't think our weather, unusual weather is going to happen less frequently. I'm afraid it's maybe more frequently. So I think we need to be serious about what the capacity is. And I understand that the last meeting of the Sewer and Water Authority was that they are going to study that. And I think that will be really, very targeted. I don't know what other people have said. It seems like the village maps are raising more questions than they're answering. They appear inconsistent from one village to another. The rationale ordinarily is just not clear. So it seems like it takes some time to take a look at them, either clarify them, or for now, exclude them, spend some time, perhaps put them back in a future version of the plan. And I think someone said, well, if you take those out and you have those other maps that make it look like they're huge areas for development, I said, I don't know why we need any maps. I think the plan of precisely this, and maybe one besides it, that we do need to keep in mind what you need from Rapid County and what issue you need to discuss. See the attractive future and plan with that primarily, and we really need to stick to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Diane.
I'm Diane Bruce, Piedmont District. I pretty much agree with everything that's been said about Sperryville so far. And will address that primarily. But before I do that, I'd like to mention two other little insignificant inconsistencies. Your map fifteen E shows the Shiloh Baptist Church, which is in Woodville, in the wrong location. And your historic district map shows Benvenue and Flint Hill reversed as far as where they're noted on that map. Primarily, I'm interested tonight in what happens in Sperryville. The overlay maps, I think, are like a red flag to developers. If you put a ring around a village and say, this is where we might consider development, anybody who wants to develop might think, well, I've jumped over the personal boot. I'm inside the ring. I will probably get more consideration if I want to develop in that area. So I feel like rings around the villages are just a red flag inviting development. Increased population, and that's what seems to be happening under the comprehensive plan for Sperryville. Increased population will bring higher taxes to operate government. We'll have to pay more for additional law enforcement, emergency services, fire and rescue, educational costs, additional administrative and office staff, additional offices, a bigger courthouse, and on and on and on. So although we cannot stop growth and we don't want to stop growth, we're going to have change. But to encourage growth is going to encourage more costs. And the highway commercial area in Sperryville, I think that that should be deleted. Now, that's not new in this comprehensive plan. We've had highway commercial for a long time up that road. But I think the existing businesses and homes should be grandfathered in. Any new construction should require an independent review. But I think we ought to delete highway commercial. We have a general commercial area in the middle of the county. I'm not sure why we need more commercial area to the west of Sperryville. Highway commercial includes things such as electric generating plants, utility transmission facilities, firing ranges, trailer parks, and any number of other miscellaneous commercial activities. As for the village maps, I hope you will delete them. I agree with everything that's been said so far about deleting these maps. We need further study. We need to understand what they're really saying. And as for the sewer system, that system was built to fix a problem. It was not built to accommodate growth. When it was built, it was anticipated it would last thirty to thirty-five years. It's almost thirty-five years old now. It was designed to have one hundred and fifty-eight taps and one hundred and ninety-five EDUs. It now has one hundred and seventy-eight taps and two hundred and ninety-six EDUs. Chairman of the Water and Sewer Authority said at the meeting that they had in September that he believed, and I assume the rest of the sewer authority agree, that they needed to have a study as to the capacity and the upkeep and the maintenance and the cost before much development is added on to the sewer system. So I urge the board to consider deleting the maps until we can figure out why we need the maps and what they're for. You don't have to approve this plan right now. You have a hundred and fifty days. So I hope that you will consider the many things that you have heard tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, well, I want to make sure everybody has a term before we take a second swipe. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Keelman.
I have a question. I was in a meeting about a year ago. And it was presented that we have a problem in the county that we haven't got enough children to populate the school adequately. And then we might be in danger of losing the school if we can lose the population. It was, the number cited in terms of the number of children required to keep the school functioning was somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred, give or take. And if this is the problem, encouraging growth in terms of a younger population and growing the county that way, I can't see how anything that's been addressed in terms of Sperryville could accommodate anything approaching five hundred families that would supply the children required to keep the school going in that area. And I think that it's woefully inadequate if that's the problem. We need to look at something else.
Thank you, Mr. Keelman. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right. There's no one else wishing to speak. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Board members, do you all have any comments or motions that you'd like to make in regards to this review this evening?
Mr. Curry, would you just confirm what our hundred and fifty day deadline is? The actual deadline?
I believe. I believe. I remember typing it. I believe it's the twenty-nine. Yeah, December twenty-ninth.
Well, I know that earlier today, we discussed a possible work session on the nineteenth of this month. I think it's important that we compile the feedback that we have this evening and also review the errata and any errata that might stem out of this evening's meeting as well. And work to integrate those details into the plans. As all those reach back to finish out details with any constituents that may come forward this evening that may be willing to apply all of the information as well. So it had always been in the back of my mind that if folks were available on the nineteenth, that a work session would be a suitable way to move the comp plan forward. And I think, are you available, Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
It would be the evening of Monday, the nineteenth. If we could start earlier, that tends to work a little bit better for work sessions. If we could start at six. And I think the courthouse would be a suitable location for a work session. And is that everything? You need to continue the meeting from this evening, Mr. Curry?
Yes, I wonder where you have to at the end of the table.
Okay. Just let it make sure we're hitting all cylinders.
At eight hundred, please.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion regarding the comp plan this evening?
Madam Chairwoman, I just want to thank everyone who came out tonight. I recognize going out in public isn't easy for people right now. And I count a closer fifty people here, many of whom are residents of the Hampton District in particular to them. Thank you for coming out for everyone's comments. Extremely valuable. for coming out. For everyone's comments, extremely valuable. We're not starting over. Obviously, the Planning Commission folks have done a great job advancing this document. Your inputs, your input has been heard, and we'll continue to hear it. And so please send email messages and write down any of your thoughts, so that we can incorporate all of that in advance of our work session on the 19th. Thank you very much for coming out.
Any other supervisors? I would just second Mr. Whitson's comment. I think this is the most robust meeting we've had in probably six months, and I look forward to digging into the details and feedback from this evening on the 19th, and have probably multiple additional follow-up meetings as well. Thank you very much. That takes us on to the public hearing. Item FY 2021, amended budget.
Mr. Curry. Do you want to jump in?
Oh, no, please do. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
His board members are aware, you could, Virginia Section 15.2, 2507, acquiring this calendar to hold the budget. Public hearing, amended budget, through supplemental appropriations that exceed 1% of the budget. Board members are very familiar that we've been fortunate to receive large sums of CARES Act dollars, only the federal government has to state. Again, those dollars need to be appropriated into the budget, along with some carryover expenditures for projects that weren't completed in the last fiscal year. When all that's added up, it exceeds 1%. You appropriated before this date through normal supplemental appropriations. Some of that, up to just below the 1% limit, we've now hit the 1% limit. This public hearing's been advertised to have happened tonight. The amended budget document is included in the board packet, as are resolutions to adopt the amended budget and adopt amended budget appropriations. So unless there are any questions, it would be appropriate to open the public hearing.
All right. So this will be similar in format to the previous public hearing. Your comment will be related to the amended budget. If the stamp rolls are in place, please identify yourself by your name and the district in which you reside. Keep your comments limited to the amended budget, including the attachments and the agenda, and if you could keep your comments to five minutes or less, we shall be all set. Is there anyone that's wishing to speak? This is the public hearing on the amended budget item on the agenda this evening. Well, that might be the shortest public comment period ever. Fair close.
It's not, it's really, when it comes.
Mr. Curry, is there any additional information we should have or in order, and which you'd like to adopt the elements?
Yes, the two resolutions included, the meeting terms included a resolution to amend the budget. That should be adopted first, and then once the budget is amended, you can appropriate the amended events.
Very good. Is there any discussion or motion in regards to the amended budget and the appropriation that we have before this evening?
Madam Chair, I'll just, I'll jump in. I'll review it. I think we've all been very attentive to, since the budget was adopted, as to what's been coming and going. Just to move things along, I will go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the draft resolution, which itself adopts the amended budget as a first step.
Thank you for your motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Thank you, Ms. Donahue. All in favor, please say aye. A roll call, I'm sorry. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. That takes us to the appropriation attachment. Do I have a motion in regards to that?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we adopt the resolution as presented, which completes the supplemental appropriations that are incorporated into the amended budget that we've already adopted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is that a second? Oh, Mr. Fraser, thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Thank you. It's another roll call vote. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Right, that takes us to the public comment. For anyone that might wish to comment on any topics which we did not cover this evening, please raise your hand, or you can comment a second time with something we have covered this evening. Please raise your hand, and I'll identify you, and you can make your comments in the same format as the public hearings. Ms. Butler?
I would like to say there are many people here tonight who commented on Sperryville. I am the only Isabeau of Sperryville here. Diane lived close by. What Diane said was correct. A lot of the others do not know what the hell they were talking about. Sperryville has ordered in ruin about the bars that have been allowed to come in here. The other people think they can come in here and tell us what to do. I'm really sick of it.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, I think that's Mr. Geno behind the mask.
Lady Geno, Somahaughthorn District. I am not sure if I'm in the right spot. I'm not sure if you talked about that. I apologize. I was at a PTO meeting and got really excited that so many people were coming for a PTO meeting, realized that was not true.
I was quite excited that there were that many people coming for our board supervisor meeting.
Well, I wanted to speak on the Family Medical Leave Act that I'm not sure if you guys have already voted on. If so, maybe I should just step down. But I wanted to throw my support in as a young mom and a young parent for Amanda Weekly, and just for support, and hopefully that you guys would pass our resolution to pay our young families medical, Family Medical Leave Act. It really means a lot to us, and I know Amanda especially has gone above and beyond for the past 10 years for the youth in this county, and sometimes we get overlooked with the amount of people that are here in the county. And it really helps attract people, and helps us to feel appreciated when you guys recognize that. And I would hope you would vote in support of that.
Thank you, Ms. Geno. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, Ms. Bruce.
I noticed on the agenda, I think, there was something about traffic in Sperryville. Is that on the agenda?
That was on the afternoon agenda.
Okay, and I was unable to attend the afternoon agenda. I would just like to say that the traffic in Sperryville is just chaotic, congested, confusing, and unsafe. And I point to this weekend in particular. The leaves haven't turned beautiful yet. I don't know what all the traffic was, but the traffic through the village was just unreal. Now, we did open a new brewery out just past Sperryville on the road to Culpeper. There seems to be an issue with oncoming traffic not being seen by people who are heading east as they turn into the brewery. There's traffic coming from Culpeper towards Sperryville. They're popping over those hills, that hill, people are turning. So I hope we don't have a problem there in the future, but that is a new thing. And then just the volume of traffic through town this weekend was just phenomenal. So I don't know what we can do about it, but I hope that something can be done. And if there's anything I can help with, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce. I would just add that Mr. Nesbit was at the afternoon session, and he's always very helpful and responsive in vetoing the permit that entrance to the new brewery. So if you've noticed issues with it, and put it in an email to me, I will forward it to him and let him know that you have serious concerns. I would just say, I hope people realize that what happens in things like breweries and wineries, we as a county have very little sway over. It is all done at state level, because that lobby is so strong. It's not something that we have much influence over at all, nor really could we at this point. But if there ever comes an opportunity to influence that sort of thing, I certainly would. I'll leave it to Ms. Bruce.
It was not my intention to complain about the brewery, but the traffic that now, because they have located in a different place, and the traffic that we are experiencing in the downtown part of Sperryville, because now it's all coming around corners to go out there, and then it's all coming back. So I'm not complaining about the brewery. I don't know what we can do about that entrance, but as far as growth and development and more traffic, we already have a problem in Sperryville, as you've noticed. But, thank you.
Absolutely. And they are restructuring the exit from 231 next year. So any input you have, we need to help pull it in. They're doing that as well. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Mr. Shuland?
Brian Shuland, Waytonville District. I'd like to say I'm asking for a friend. Christmas is coming up soon. My wife's birthday is soon. Will you be able to flatten the mall, flatten the mall, if you'll open?
That's, that's not yet determined, I'm sorry.
Is that particular stage?
It is a local decision at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And thank you for all your work on the comprehensive plan.
My pleasure.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? All right, that's the end of the public comment period then. I have to make a motion that we continue this meeting as discussed to the evening of September 19th.
October.
I'm sorry, October 19th, at the Rappahannock County Courthouse, at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. Fraser. A second? I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.